...liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could, sorry, please remain standing while we have a moment of silence to honor our troops in service and remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice so we can continue to enjoy our freedoms here at home. Thank you. Before we, hello ladies, before we commence with our regular meeting, there are a couple of honors that I would like to bestow upon first, we have here a number of men and women from Suffolk who currently serve in the Armed Forces as well as we're going to be giving out our Green Thumb Award. So I'm just going to step up to the podium here and we'll go do that. Let me move this this way, alright? Is that right? Good evening, everybody. As you all know Suffolk has a very long tradition of having men and women serve in our Armed Forces, obviously starting with the birthplace of our nation, the intersection of Lafayette and Washington. George Washington was here in the village of Suffolk and throughout years, throughout the years and throughout the generations, we've been honored to have so many within our community serve, serve our country and ensure that we're able to continue to live in a community like Suffolk and to enjoy our freedoms. So we felt that it would be appropriate to honor men and women in our community who are currently serving or are currently about to enlist in the Armed Services. And again, we know we stand right here at that crossroads of Washington and Lafayette where we have a monument which recognizes all those who have served in the village of Suffolk in various conflicts throughout the past century. So again, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call up a number of men and women and we're going to present them with a certificate. And again, we're honored to have you here today and on behalf of the Suffolk Village Board, we are so honored and privileged for your service to our great nation. And this is just a small token of our appreciation. I would like to call up Sergeant Cromer. We have a village employee and also son of one of our village employees. We have Ryan Ortiz of the United States Marine Corps. Ryan Conklin of the National Guard. Joseph Selchik of the National Guard. James Hogan of the Marine Corps. James is working. We also have Philip Fenara who is enlisting, who will soon be enlisting, in which service? Is Philip here?
Marine Corps.
Marine Corps. Come on up. I think they're just completing his paperwork, right? Randy Ortiz, who just enlisted in the Marine Corps. And to complete the trifecta in the Ortiz family, their sister, Ryan and Randy's sister, Melanie, is currently attending the United States Air Force Academy. So a family that's committed to service to our country. in training, but again, we're just so honored for all you do for our community and to keep our country safe. And again, you know you have a lot to do, so you don't feel obligated to stick around for the village board meeting, but we appreciate you being here and be safe and be well. Thank you. So another award we'd like to give out is a time-honored tradition here in the village of Suffolk, is the Green Thumb Award. This award is given out to the village residents who are recognized as having the best flower displays at their home. We give out an award for the best Halloween decorations, the best holiday decorations, and now we have the Green Thumb Award. So our recycling committee, Chuck Barone and Bruce Simon, who I think is here or was here earlier, they go around the village and they drive around and try to pick out the best displays. So what we have here is I have two runners-up and then we have the winner. One of the nominees for the Green Thumb Award is Rosemary Schultz of Six Beach Road. I don't know if Rosemary's here today, but we can give her a round of applause and we'll make sure she gets the certificate. Another nominee is Joe Wilson of Three Dunery Court. Joe is here. And the winner who receives a certificate as well as a $50 gift certificate to Danina is Ricky and Barry Sussman of Five Sunset Drive. So I believe they're here. Thank you so much. He has no green thumb, but he has a hurt finger. So again, thank you so much for keeping our community beautiful. And once again, thanks to the Suffolk Recycling Committee for presenting awards like this and, you know, keeping the community involved and recognizing those people who go above and beyond to either have beautiful holiday decorations or to make sure that they have beautiful yards with flowers for people to enjoy. So again, thank you. Okay, so we're going right on to a regular board meeting. We are setting the dates for the July meetings due to the July 4th holiday and the way it falls. We're going to have a workshop and board meeting combination on Monday, July 8th at 7:00 PM. So please make sure to note that we'll have an early start that is usually typical of the 7:30 meeting. Fire Department Chief Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick note, four of those members of service there are also volunteers in the Fire Department here in the village. I have a few items on the agenda tonight. Item A is to establish a fire zone in front of Three Cross Street from driveway to driveway.
So moved to second.
Well, no, no, no. Set a public hearing.
Yeah, so moved to set a public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Yeah, July like 7:05?
No, because it can't be during the workshop. It has to be during the board meeting, right?
Well, you're not going to have separate meetings, though, right?
No, we're going to have one, yeah, we'll have one straight through.
Alright, so let's do 7:15?
Sure.
7:15.
That's fine.
7:15, okay. No, we'll do it separately. Gives people a chance to get it.
The next item is to install a 300 square foot prefabricated shed on the Hose Company property at 35 Washington Avenue.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
And the last item is to accept Christopher Russo, age 19, as a new member of the Suffolk Volunteer Hose Company.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a public hearing there.
Okay, first, is it 7:45? Yes, first is a public hearing regarding the connection to the sewer system. Terry, you want to?
Both of the public hearings with respect to connection to the sewer system and to the water system involve simple changes. The code in order to ensure that responsible people were doing the installations because in both instances they hook into the village system had previously required that the contractor be licensed by the County of Rockland. That turned out not to be specific enough, so the amendment provides that all work for the installation, such service lines shall be performed by a contractor possessing a current plumbing license issued by the County of Rockland. So it's just to clear up that minor ambiguity in both cases.
Okay. I don't know, Charles, did you want to speak on this at all or?
It's pretty much.
It's self, it's fine.
No, I think it's self, I mean, okay.
Other than we discussed this in previous workshops.
Okay. So no problem, does anyone have any public comment?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Do we need a local law?
I'll move the local law.
Is there a local law number?
Yeah.
Number?
Hold on, just one moment.
I would just say.
Just what's the number of the local law? Local law number five.
I'll move local law number five.
Okay. Sarah, second?
Second.
Wait till we're all correct. Mrs. Tabado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Yeah, same thing with the water.
Okay. We have a second public hearing, a similar law concerning connections to the water system. Terry, do you need to just?
No, I think I just explained.
It's pretty much the same thing, just with respect to the water systems. So again, if there's any public comment, please feel free to come up.
Motion to close the public hearing? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed.
I'll move local law number six.
Good guess, Jack.
Second.
The number was just a guess.
There you go. Mr. Tabado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. 7:51. Okay, moving right along. We have our third public hearing of the evening. This involves money in lieu of recreation, which is a fund which anybody who obtains, what, subdivision approval?
Or site plan.
In some instances is required to pay the village money in lieu of recreation. This is a fund that can be used exclusively for infrastructure associated with recreation. In the past, when we had developments in this village, people contributed and were able to use that money to do various things to improve our recreation facilities in Suffolk. But again, what we wanted to do is make sure that we have a system in place that can be applied equally and fairly in the future. So Terry, I don't know if John, Ryan, John?
Yeah, I mean, simply it's an amendment to the standard fee schedule and our planner, John Lang, has analyzed this and has a presentation.
You guys can see this. It's basically, we're trying to cure an inequity in the way the fee is calculated. Basically, it was a straight line. Okay. It was a straight line representation, starting at $5,000 and it didn't matter how many units you had, you paid the same $5,000, which is not really the way it's done in most places. They try to graduate the charges and that's what we're doing here. So if I could, I'll just read you the amounts. If you have a new subdivision, a single unit would be $5,000, two to five units would be $3,000, six to 10 units would be $2,500, 11 to 50 units would be $2,000, and 51 or more units would be $1,500. You don't get, if you have 50 units, you have to trip your way down. So it's a graduated charge. It gives a larger developer a chance to come in without bankrupting him on the fees. They also have the ability now to give them credit for any recreation that they're going to be providing. So the proposal was to give an applicant 100% credit for facilities designed for use throughout the village, open to everything. If he wants to get up to a 50% credit for recreation facilities designed for residents of the complex only, and if it's used for both, the 75% credit up to $50,000 in addition to the fee. Any questions?
If there are any questions, we discussed this at great length at the village workshop. Does anybody from the board have any questions before we open up to public? If anyone has public comment, please come on down.
Jim Genatino, Two Memorial Drive. John, that's per unit, those fees?
In this landscape, it's per unit.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Yeah, you pay for the first unit, that's the price.
Could you say your question over again? We couldn't really hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if it was per unit fees.
Correct. Yeah, the way it does is everybody pays the same for the first unit, the second unit, just as it goes up, there are breakpoints as you have more units. And then we also discuss the credit for having onsite recreation. I think something we discussed at the workshop is if you have, let's say, you know, two houses or there's a piece of land and there's only, there's limited land in the village of Suffolk, but let's say somebody builds, you know, four, four or five units. And as a result of four or five units, if the methodology would require, what do we say, 15?
2,500.
So if it was, let's say, five units, you'd have, what, $4,000, you'd owe like $17,000. Or if it's four units, you don't like, the cost would be $14,000. So in those situations, what we felt was if, instead of writing a check to the village of $14,000, then maybe the developer at that point can decide, you know what, I'll spend a little more, I'll spend $20,000 or $25,000 and put in a small playground. And what's great about that is that benefits the community, it attracts families who are living there, plus for them, it also raises probably the price that they could get for their units. So again, at the end of the day, while it's good to get the money and use it to increase our recreation infrastructure, we also want to incentivize people who are building to provide onsite recreation because it makes the village more attractive and communities more attractive. So I think it's a good balance that we've kind of worked out here and I appreciate John's efforts in going about it. So any other? Oh, here we go.
Can I ask you, what is the per fee right now? Is this the proposed one or is this the old one?
No, the one that's now is $5,000 a unit, all the way up to, you know, whatever it is. But the times that we've actually had this in place, we've ended up in the past negotiating with the developer to reduce the fees because the fees at that level are just completely prohibitive towards anyone doing it. So it puts the village in a better situation instead of negotiating with each developer over fees that they're going to pay, which is something that, you know, we want to stay away from. We have a system in place that spells it and kind of works in every situation.
We have a system in place right now, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if we have proposed 110 units for the New Orange Avenue project and 110 times 5 would be $550,000, at this way, we might get $100,000. Now, the builder can make his building nicer and he can get more profit out of it, but the village isn't going to get any benefit. None of these people in this room are unless you're buying one of them units or whatever it may be. So I think you need, I think this needs some looking into. I think you have to take charts and look at the numbers and associate them right. You're giving up hundreds of thousands of dollars with this vote right now.
That's not, we've never, we've never used the amount. It was always, that amount was passed and it wasn't looked at as being something that was in line with other municipalities. So the time when this has been in place, no one has paid that amount because it's completely cost prohibitive to get any sort of larger development. Yes, if someone subdivides one property into two properties, they pay $5,000. But when you get to developments that are potentially 40, 50 units, in the past, even under the current methodology, the village has negotiated to reduce the fees because the fees at the current level are just completely disproportionate to anything that bears any semblance to having, you know, something in reality. So what we want to do is avoid the situation in the future where we're negotiating with individual developers and we have something in place that works in all situations and is more in line with what other municipalities do.
Okay, but just to get this correct, we're turning that potential $550,000 on that one subdivision into $160,000. I'm doing a little quick math here, but I'm saying 110 times 1500, that is 150 and 10 times 160. So you've actually just cut off hundreds of thousands of dollars and I think that should be thought about for these children in this community who needs those playgrounds too.
Thank you.
We know we're, I'm not done, sir.
Sure.
Okay. I know that you're, he's going to, when he goes and he saves that money, he's going to put more in. But you just, one, he's getting, he's getting the double savings this developer now. He's getting the savings, one, because he's not paying the village, and two, he's getting a better sale price for the unit, which you just admitted. That's what you just said, so.
What do you mean?
Well, you just said he's going to get a better price. So he's getting double fold and I don't think he should do it on a taxpayer's expense. Something's in play. I think you're better off, I think you're better off keeping it the way, making a deal with them and then instead of getting a 160, you might get 260.
Maybe not.
Maybe do something for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Can I get your follow-up?
Well, Jim, could we just, one, I mean?
I just want to know if this is effective now? What about all the people that have gotten their properties already passed?
Everything going?
You have a number of people that are going to be doing building here that have already got their zoning, they're just hanging out waiting, I don't know why, for all their permits. They're going to reap this benefit?
This will, this will apply immediately because people are not required to pay the fee until a certain time. Again, we recently had a situation with Esther Gitlow, Esther Gitlow won, and again, this was passed under your administration. And the thing is, it bears no semblance or no reality to any, you could say, you could say, okay, $30,000 a unit and say that's the fee of recreation and then you can see what happens. And you're not going to get any, the bottom line is the purpose of this is to provide money in lieu of recreation for someone who comes in and is not providing recreation and taxes on our system.
I'm not arguing for or against this system. I'm arguing the point that people rushed to get their projects through, they got all the benefit of quick planning, quick approvals, and it's been years and the shovels haven't gone in the ground. Now they're going to get a bonus.
If you think, okay.
No, I'm going to, let me finish and I'll listen to you for 20 minutes if you want to go. We couldn't stop these people from leaving their dilapidated buildings up for six and seven years.
Jim, if you could talk about what we're talking about here, if you have some other comments or public comment?
It's all related.
Thank you.
They got all the benefits of a quick approval, they strung you along for three years that they want to put permits in.
Okay, Jim, Jim, thank you. Honestly, if you can just keep it to the subject of recreation.
It's all related.
I don't think it's related.
They have held the village up for six years.
Okay, thank you.
And now you're paying them back.
Thank you. We're paying them back.
You can thank me, but that's the case.
I think that that's a very, that's a very, you know, be careful, you know, in terms of what you accuse. Thank you.
I'm not a Jew, sir.
Thank you. Jim, Jim, thank you.
No, 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 you keep coming back, I have a right to answer.
Jim.
You allowed these people all the benefits, they could not be touched with burnt down buildings, trees that fell on buildings, and we passed the law, but they were grandfathered. It didn't affect them. Mr. Meehan brought it up a number of times, I brought it up a number of times.
Thank you, Jim.
But they don't get grandfathered now.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue. Just as a clarification, just as a point of clarification, when you said this would, by changing the pricing structure, by doing something like this, this would allow a builder to possibly put a recreation facility in their project? Is that recreation facility open to the rest of the village?
It depends on, again, when the planning board goes in there, what is proposed. There's a limit that we're proposing. The purpose of this program is not to try to extract more money out of people. And I know everything looks like a revenue source and no one's worked harder to get revenue for this village than me. The purpose is to provide when people do not have recreation, they're taxing on our infrastructure. So if you're talking about a situation in which a building of 48 units comes in, that building is going to have onsite recreation. So for example, you look at Cross Street, they have a gym in the building and they have a pool. So the point is they're not using our pool and we're still going to charge them money to give to the village as an extra fee. So that's, that's the situation. It has to bear some resemblance to the recreation they have onsite. Now, what you're supposed to do or what you could do is say, dollar for dollar, you reduce the recreation. So if you add a situation like Cross Street and they come in and they build a pool and they build a gym and the methodology, whether the old one or the new one says $200,000, if they spend more than $200,000, we get no check. The village gets nothing. That's the way it's supposed to work. So the situation here is we still get revenue, they get a credit for onsite recreation, but the credit only goes so far. You can't have it both ways and say, we want money because you're taxing on our recreation. They go, well, we have a gym, we have a pool, we have a sauna, we have everything anyone could ever want. We spent $300,000, you want us to write you a check for $200,000. What they would say is subtract the 300 from the 200, we paid more than you owed and you get nothing. So what we're trying to do is have somewhere in between where the village gets fees, but we also recognize that they're putting onsite recreation. Because if you don't have this, then what the developer will do is come in and just, they'll spend all the money on recreation and the village gets no fees. So, you know, that's, that's the situation. So you know, I can tell you that whatever the village got from Cross Street, they spent a lot more on facilities in terms of putting in a pool and, you know, putting in a gym. So again, this is just trying to be in line with everybody else. It's no breaks to anyone, it's just a recognition that you have a schedule in place that makes absolutely no sense.
I'm not questioning you, I'm not doubting.
And you're not gonna get any, the bottom line is, the purpose of this is to provide money in lieu of recreation for someone who comes in and is not providing recreation and taxes on our system.
I'm not arguing for or against this system. I'm arguing the point that people rushed to get their projects through, they got all the benefit of quick planning, quick approvals, and it's been years and the shovels haven't gone in the ground. Now they're gonna get a bonus.
If you think, okay.
No, let me finish, and I'll listen to you for 20 minutes if you want to go. We couldn't stop these people from leaving their dilapidated buildings up for six and seven years.
Jim, if you could talk about what we're talking about here, if you have some other comments or public comment?
It's all related.
Thank you.
They got all the benefits of a quick approval, they strung you along for three years that they want to put permits in.
Jim, Jim, thank you. Honestly, if you can just keep it to the subject of recreation.
It's all related.
I don't think it's related.
They have held the village up for six years.
Okay, thank you.
And now you're paying them back.
Thank you. We're paying them back. I think that that's a very...
You can thank me, but that's the case.
That's a very, that's a very, you know, be careful, you know, in terms of what you accuse. Thank you.
I'm not accusing you.
Thank you. Jim, Jim, thank you.
No, 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 you keep coming back, I have a right to answer.
Jim.
You allowed these people all the benefits. They could not be touched with burnt-down buildings, trees that fell on buildings, and we passed the law, but they were grandfathered. It didn't affect them. Mr. Meehan brought it up a number of times. I brought it up a number of times.
Thank you, Jim.
But they don't get grandfathered now.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue. Just as a clarification, just as a point of clarification, when you said this would, by changing the pricing structure, by doing something like this, this would allow a builder to possibly put a recreation facility in their project? Is that recreation facility open to the rest of the village?
It depends on, again, when the planning board goes in there, what is proposed. There's a limit that we're proposing. The purpose of this program is not to try to extract more money out of people. And I know everything looks like a revenue source, and no one's worked harder to get revenue for this village than me. The purpose is to provide when people do not have recreation, they're taxing on our infrastructure. So if you're talking about a situation in which a building of 48 units comes in, that building is going to have onsite recreation. So for example, you look at Cross Street. They have a gym in the building, and they have a pool. So the point is, they're not using our pool, and we're still gonna charge them money to give to the village as an extra fee. So that's the situation. It has to bear some resemblance to the recreation they have onsite. Now, what you're supposed to do, or what you could do, is say, dollar for dollar, you reduce the recreation. So if you add a situation like Cross Street, and they come in, and they build a pool, and they build a gym, and the methodology, whether the old one or the new one, says $200,000, if they spend more than $200,000, we get no check. The village gets nothing. That's the way it's supposed to work. So the situation here is, we still get revenue, they get a credit for onsite recreation, but the credit only goes so far. You can't have it both ways and say, we want money because you're taxing on our recreation. They go, well, we have a gym, we have a pool, we have a sauna, we have everything anyone could ever want. We spent $300,000. You want us to write you a check for $200,000. What they would say is, subtract the 300 from the 200. We paid more than you owed, and you get nothing. So what we're trying to do is have somewhere in between where the village gets fees, but we also recognize that they're putting onsite recreation. Because if you don't have this, then what the developer do is come in and just, they'll spend all the money on recreation, and the village gets no fees. So, you know, that's the situation. So, you know, I can tell you that whatever the village got from Cross Street, they spent a lot more on facilities in terms of putting in a pool and, you know, putting in a gym. So again, this is just trying to be in line with everybody else. It's no breaks to anyone. It's just a recognition that you have a schedule in place that makes absolutely no sense.
I'm not questioning you, I'm not doubting any of that. The, and I certainly was not part of the board at Cross Street. I don't know what was in the builder's mind. I'm fairly certain, though, and I'm sure everybody here would probably agree, that he put in his recreation to make his property better, a better sell. That doesn't make him a bad neighbor or a good neighbor. He did it as a business decision. And I'm just trying to find out if business decisions are that recreations are going to be included in properties in kind of exchange for this lowered fee, which is not in and of itself a bad idea, are other people besides those 50 units, the people in those 50 units, going to be allowed to use that recreation? That was my only question. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. John, sure.
We have to keep a couple of things in mind. The rec fee is tied to the law. The law says that you must have a plan and have developed a need for recreation facilities. The rec plan that was done was done back in 2000, it was done by the previous planner, it was a credible piece of work, which basically said, you have almost all the recreation you need. The plan identified a couple of softball fields as the major need. If you're not gonna go into an acquisition program, you can't collect the money as part of the rec fee. So in trying to balance that, that's exactly what this plan...
Tom, can you, can't hear, thanks, thank you.
That's exactly what the plan is trying to do, what this rec fee is doing. It says, okay, here's a sliding scale because we have reduced needs now. And, by the way, if you provide something, you get some credit for it. So it's a balanced program as opposed to being a heavy hitter and a linear arrangement. A linear arrangement doesn't work. There should be some benefit for the number of units that you're putting in, especially when you're putting in one- and two-bedroom units versus three- or four-bedroom single-family homes. It's a question of balance, it's a question of compliance with the law. It's not a giveaway to the developers.
John, can I ask, can I ask a question yet, or are we still...
I'm sorry.
No, of course you can.
I could ask a question.
Yeah.
John, I have a couple of questions for you. One, right now, we do give some sort of credit for onsite recreation in our plan already. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a negotiated item, and there's no basis for the negotiation.
Right, so...
Which would be, make us subject to potential lawsuits.
Okay, because it's saying at the discretion of the planning board, they would determine what credit is given to the builder as far as what kind of recreation. So if they have onsite recreation that the community can use, they get more credit?
Exactly.
And if it's something that's just for their developing, you know, their development, it's much less?
Much less.
Correct, right?
That's correct.
Okay. My second question is, so that's something we're doing already? We're just, that's something that we're doing already? But now...
It was a negotiated process, and there was no guidelines for how the negotiation could go. Now we're putting it into work.
Okay, now, do we have a set number for onsite recreation?
Yes. What I was proposing was, if it's 100% for the community as well...
Right.
He gets 100% credit up to 50,000.
Okay.
If it's not for the community at all, he gets 50% of what he spends up to 50,000.
Okay.
And if it's a mix, the planning board has the reaction, but I'm proposing 75% as a compromise.
Up to $50,000.
Up to $50,000.
And there still has to be an individualized assessment by the planning board.
Exactly.
In each instance, it's not just a straight number.
Exactly. There's a basis for the negotiation as opposed for it just being what it is.
So that can still be negotiated, in other words?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because my thing is, I mean, we, as a small village, provide a lot of recreation. And even though there may be a pool onsite, that doesn't mean they're not, you know, that those units are not gonna utilize all of the other recreation in the village. So, I mean, I think we have to not only look at if it's community or if it's private, but we also have to look at how much recreation they're providing. You know, I don't think that they...
Absolutely. And that's what the recreation plan looked at. It looked at, what parks do we have within the village?
Right.
What parks do we have provided by the town of Ramapo? What parks do we have by the county and by the state?
Right.
And that's what the recreation plan did. It assessed that, and it said, maybe you're short maybe two acres. That's what the plan came to, after all that calculations. So if you look at the map here, and you look at your residential neighborhoods, there's a good coverage of parks.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't mean that we can't try to get more.
Right.
But we need to have that in the plan in order to be able to take the rec fees for that.
I just feel like 50% and 100% is like a lot. Because I just feel like even if it is, you know, a small recreation area that the community could utilize, I mean, let's just say they have a tennis court, and they say the community can use that. To give them 100% credit for putting in a tennis court that the community can use just kind of seems a little off to me.
At best, that would be a 75%, and probably a 50% because more local people would use it, and that's the planning board's determination.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that that would be a lot less. I just don't feel like the 50, 100.
We can manipulate the numbers differently.
See, the last thing I wanted to ask you was, I just feel like I have to kind of be inclined to agree that I feel like there's a big drop-off in the number. Now, that is really something that's in line with the rest of the municipalities in the county? Because, I don't know, it just seems like if we were charging 5,000 a unit, and we're going to 1,500 a unit, and as Dagan is saying, you're going to get, you know, a nicer area because, you know, the developer's probably gonna be inclined to put recreation into their development. And they are going to make it, you know, a better sell.
I'm expecting...
I just feel like that's a big drop-off.
It is, but it's only going through a graduated calculation. You pay a certain amount for the first unit, you pay a certain amount for the second to the fifth, and it's only if you get up to, I believe it's, what, 50 units or more?
50 or above.
That you get down to that. How many opportunities are there for somebody to put in a unit in here that's gonna have more than 70 units, more than 50 units?
But realistically speaking, for the developments that are being proposed in our area, they're gonna fall above that.
No.
They're gonna be more than 50 units.
I think you only have a potential for two sites that would exceed the 50 units.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like it's a big drop-off.
We gotta realize that we had, I think it was either $500 was the amount until two administrations ago that brought it up to 5,000 as an arbitrary number. So for years, that's the number we had. So, you know, if it was $30,000 a unit, and we had no development, and we said, let's cut it in half, it all depends where it was. And for years, we had it at a certain level. This only happened like six years ago, where they upped it to $5,000. And every time it has come up, we have, as a board, individually negotiated with developers, which is not something that this board should want to do. There should be a number in place. This is the scale. These are your units. This is how much it is. The only form of negotiation is what credit you get up to $50,000 based on what you're putting in. So we can't, the point is, right now, any developer's gonna say, you've negotiated with everybody. Okay? Gitlow built 100 units, half a million dollars. They paid the village $100,000 in 80% discount. So if someone comes in next and goes, you're only getting a 50% discount, we don't want to be in that situation. That is not a situation legally or ethically this board should be involved in. We should have a formula in place that bears proportion to some everybody else.
I think you misunderstood me, Mayor. I was not in all saying that it's not something that shouldn't be done. I'm just saying I think that the scale that we're using has too big of a drop-off from, per unit.
But that's based on something...
That's just the way I feel.
But that wasn't in place, just so you know. The history of it, that's only been in place for two administrations.
Okay, and I totally understand that. I'm just saying to you that I feel as though there's, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have a non-negotiable fee. I think that's a great idea. I think we know exactly what we're getting, and there's, you know, no back-and-forth haggling. I just feel like the numbers may be off.
Okay.
And that's how I feel.
I might just point out that I took a look at the number of building permits and what the revenue was. With the exception of Cross Street, and one you just mentioned, the...
Gitlow.
Gitlow. 2007, there were five single-family residences. You're not gonna fund a lot of recreation development on a level there. 2008, one single-family residence. 2009, nothing. 2010, nothing. 2011, nothing. 2012, three single-family residences. With those sorts of numbers, we have to do something to try to attract it. Now, 2013, we do have potentials, but they're gonna be 13, 14, and 15 at best. So they'll be, they'll be in the future. And the idea is, we really want to capitalize on the ones that are coming in to get us some revenue, but to do us in a way that we're not gonna be challenged in court. We can adjust the scale. This was a starting point, and I think it's a reasonable one, especially when you give the planning board the ability to negotiate.
I think definitely, you know, I agree with that portion of it. I just would like to have some more thought on the scale. Just my opinion.
Thank you.
That's why we had...
Sure.
I just want to put it right, I'm not judging Mr. Lang's performance. He's exceptional at what he does. I've seen his work in the past up here. But I just differ on a point about, you know, what parklands we have and what parklands we don't have. And I think the future, watching out for Sufferin' in the future, and one of our biggest properties that there are people involved in, it's the quarry project, all right? And I think we need to get that money so we can have money for that quarry eventually to put parkland there with the first purpose being water remediation for all the communities around it. So I do see a need for money and big money so we can go and buy that back from the town of Ramapo and put it in the rightful owner, the village of Sufferin', not the town of Ramapo.
Adam DiSofano, 19 Prairie Avenue. I do agree that we do need a scale to negotiate by. $5,000, it does set us up for lawsuits, things like that. I do like this as a starting point, but I think that it does need to be adjusted a little bit because with the, I agree with Trustee Abado in the fact that the scale really does drop off. I think there could be a way to, instead of doing a percentages thing that you have set up, a way where if you build a certain amount of recreation, then for each unit you build, you only have to pay X amount of dollars instead. So like, right now, we have at 5,000. Let's say someone builds, like at Cross Street, all the stuff that they built, instead of saying, all right, well, this is what you built, we can now have you pay 1,500 per unit instead of the 5,000. So it encourages those larger developments that we're talking about, that we say they're going to have onsite recreation. It encourages them even more to make that onsite recreation. Instead of having them pay $5,000 per unit, it'll lower to 1,500, 2,000, something like that. So they'll get the benefit of having onsite recreation. We'll get the benefit because the people in those facilities will not go out as much to use the facilities that the village has, and it'll keep our costs down quite a bit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else who has any comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is it local law?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
No, I'm sorry, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
So how do we...
Just a proposal to adopt a resolution amending the standard...
If someone wanted to move it, it would be a motion to adopt a resolution amending the standard schedule of fees. And you have the resolution in front of you.
I'd like to motion to table it for further discussion.
Is there no...
Can we just do that for one month, just to see if we can...
Well, yeah, that's all...
We just had our planner look at it.
Yeah. Can we...
For what?
Work with John on that?
To do what?
To review, to review what the fee schedule is.
Look, anyone can make a motion. I know that that's why we hired our planner, to review our fee schedule and come up with a fee schedule. So if we want to pay our planner to review a fee schedule that he's come up with, then we can do that.
He said it was a starting point.
But I don't, but what's the concern, that we should have more unit? I mean, come up with it now, amend it. If it's just a dollar amount...
It's not something I think that could be amended in five minutes. I think it needs thought.
So then why don't you come up with a number? What breakpoint don't you like?
Can we table it and have discussion?
No, why don't we just, if it's a matter of dollars, why don't we just discuss it?
I'm not ready to make a decision on it or to know what that fee schedule should be at the moment.
Well, if I might?
Sure.
Tricia, unfortunately, wasn't at the workshop, and I had a lot of questions at the workshop, and I'm pretty much satisfied. But I, you know, I think it's important, and I don't think one month is going to mean that much. And so I'll second the motion to table.
Okay. Is there a vote? Ms. Abado?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
I vote no. So it's tabled to next month. Okay, moving right along, we have a public hearing on the discontinued portion of Pleasant Avenue. I don't know if John is up again on that.
Mr. Mayor and trustees, this is a fairly straightforward, I think the picture's worth a thousand words. I'm not sure if the board can see this, but the drawing on the right is the current alignment of Pleasant Avenue. It comes down and is offset from the street across the street. In the developer's proposal, he wanted to make this a private road and realign it so it has a perfect alignment with Washington Circle, I believe, across the street. And it's that simple. There'd be parking on either side. The access to Pleasure Avenue remains the same for all the residents. For the businesses there, they can still go out. It's a two-way access. It's really straightforward and fairly simple. Just makes sense to do it for safety and traffic reasons.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
She's doing the walk-up. Jean?
Hello, Jean Henley, 135 Wayne Avenue. Are there any public utilities under this road? And if so, who's, will they be responsible for maintaining the sewer lines or any wirings or anything that's been, you know, placed underneath the roadway?
If I can answer, they're responsible for the snow plowing, for repaving, and for relocating all the utilities to the appropriate place.
And are there any sewer lines?
You're walking to the mic, please.
They'll be moving all the utilities to conform to the street alignment, and they'll be responsible for all the maintenance, in terms of paving and snow removal. All they're gonna do is give the village an easement that lets the neighbors behind have access through, so it makes it the same as a public street.
And then how, so the village can, if they need to dig into their repair of a water pipe...
They're gonna have an easement for utilities and access.
Okay, and we won't be charged...
Jean, keep talking to the...
We won't be charged extra for, you know, redoing the pavement, like, in a pristine condition, as, you know, as opposed to the public roads where they just throw a pile of asphalt and it's never, you know, repaved for, you know, years to come. I'm wondering if we're going to be responsible to make it as new, if we have to dig in there. I don't want an extra, you know, I was curious if there's going to be extra cost involved to maintain the road on the village's part, since?
The answer to that is no, it's strictly upon the applicant as a private road, maintenance on it. There's actually slightly decost cost for the village, because it's a section that they don't have to do.
Again, I'm thinking about the sewer lines and the water. Alright, thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions, if anyone wants to come up? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is granted.
We've got a vote on it, but I want to say a couple?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Right, I prepared a resolution for the board, and I certainly don't need to go through all the wherlasses in this, but it's important to also mention that the property's going to be conveyed to TJG for the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars. The village had appraisal, the last appraisal, prepared that was by an MIA appraiser that came up with a price of twenty-four thousand dollars, plus any closing costs that the village would incur as a result. And in addition, one of the other conditions is that they provide an easement in a form that's acceptable to the village attorney, providing unrestricted ingress and egress to the public across the petitioner's property. Now, the last discussion that was, had is good to note too, in the resolution, and I would suggest that you also add into the resolution that it would also be subject to the applicant or petitioner relocating any utilities as deemed appropriate by the superintendent of public works, and/or providing necessary easements to the Village of Suffolk for the maintenance of the same.
Okay. You have the pricing? Twenty-four thousand dollars, if it was appraised at, is there a?
Resolution number ten.
What is it, resolution number ten to? You want to read it?
I'll read the title, no, I don't have a title for it, I mean, it's a resolution discontinuing a portion of Pleasant Avenue consisting of approximately eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet, as described in the schedule annexed thereto, and conveying that portion of the property to TJG Realty.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Abado?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion is carried. Okay, moving right along, here's my agenda. Okay, culture and recreation update, Kathy Mills.
Good evening, mayor, good evening, village board, thank you for having me. Upcoming events for the Village of Suffolk Recreation Department, we have Clifford Theater, will be starting auditions on June thirteenth, June twelfth, and June seventeenth. We'll have practices in July, and then the show this year will be August second and third, and it will be Legally Blonde. We have on Thursday of this week, June thirteenth, we have the Gale Curtain Toddler Park dedication. It will be over at the toddler park located by Memorial Drive Pool. The public is welcome to that, it will be at six-thirty. We have, the pool is opening, it has opened on Memorial Day weekend, it's open on weekends right now from twelve to six, and it will be opening for the summer on Saturday, June twenty-second. We have registration swim team and swim instructions, that will be on Wednesday, June twentieth, and, I'm sorry, June eighteenth and June twentieth. We have orientation with the lifeguards on Saturday, June twenty-second. I would like to invite the village board to attend to meet the orientation with the lifeguards. We have the fishing derby this year on June twenty-second, and registration will be at eight-thirty. Fishing begins at nine-thirty, that's also on Saturday, June twenty-second. We have the pool party this year with Tommy Gardner on June twenty-fourth, and that will be at six-thirty to eight PM at the pool. We have a concert at Avon Park, that will be Canterbury Street, that will be at seven PM on June twenty, I'm sorry, I don't have a date on there. And then also, we have a senior picnic coming up at the community center. This year, it will be a barbecue on June nineteenth. And then, coming down the road, we have Suffolk Day, which will be Saturday, September twenty-eighth of this year. And then for authorization, I would like to request to increase the original hours that I gave last month, and therefore the salaries for the part-time guards at the Suffolk Memorial Pool for the two thousand and thirteen staff, so I'd like authorization for that.
Hi, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. And then also, for a weekly trip this year, I would like to authorize, I would like you to authorize, if we can book a trip to Radio City Music Hall for Sunday, November thirteenth, I'm sorry, Sunday, November seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Terry Rice, village attorney, extraordinaire.
Okay, first item on the agenda would be a motion to refer to the planning board for its review and recommendation, a proposed amendment petition from, emanates from the Board of Trustees to establish an MR-75 zone and to attach it to the redevelopment parcels on Orange Avenue. As you recall, when the hearings occurred a number of years ago on the urban renewal proposal, one piece of that was a rezoning, which at the time was denominated as MR-70. Now, since there seems to be some interest in that project proceeding with private development, not as an urban renewal project, we'd like to start the process to come up with the appropriate zoning designation for that property, and Mr. Lang has already started working on this. We have the base of the MR-70 proposal that had existed, and he'd be modifying that to make it work for those particular parcels. So if you'd like to start moving forward with this, I would suggest that you recommend, refer that to the planning board for its review and recommendation, back to the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Do we need, we need a motion, right?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes, motion is carried.
All right, the second item on there is Bruce and Fred have been working on having the village established as a Tree City for some period of time, and one component of that is the local law that you have in front of you, which would set up a tree advisory board and have them oversee the Tree City compliance. The substance of this primarily came from Fred, who got that from one of the Tree City sites, and you have time to look at it, but I think at this point, if you'd like to set a public hearing, so that they can move forward with that proposal, that would be good.
Okay, is there a motion to set up a public hearing? Why would it be seven forty, I guess seven forty-five?
Anytime.
Or seven fifty, it doesn't matter.
Some, well, you're starting at, you have one at seven fifteen, so you can make?
So we can do it at seven twenty, is there?
Seven twenty.
Yeah.
Seven twenty.
Is there, who made a motion?
I did.
Oh, you tied?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
All right, and then the only other thing, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to add, since the last board meeting, I sent to the Board of Trustees the decision of the Second Circuit on Arena versus Village of Suffolk, and I thought it was worth talking about that briefly, because this has been a long and kind of difficult battle for everybody involved. As you recall, Mr. Arena had retired, and there was negotiation as far as the payout that he was entitled to, it very quickly degenerated, I guess, into a civil rights action, there were complications with that, we took it over and had the judgment opened up and moved for summary judgment, which the district court granted in the village's favor. Mr. Arena appealed that to the Second Circuit, and a couple of weeks ago, we got a decision that the Second Circuit Court of Appeals affirmed summary judgment in the village's favor, so that is the end of that litigation.
Okay, that's good news.
That is good.
Is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay, grant writer, Mr. Rela.
Just to expand a little bit about the Tree City USA, if you drive through varying municipalities, you might see the signs as you enter the communities or leave the communities that say that there are Tree City USA, similar to like a speed limit sign in a community. And the Tree City USA is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, and they work closely with the DEC and establishing that with the forestry people and whatnot. And when Terry was mentioning Bruce, that was Bruce Simon who we're talking about, the ex-trustee, we had to put together an ordinance which establishes a board for the community on trees, okay, which would be a five-member board. It also stipulates that we actually have to have a tree ordinance, which will be developed and talk about the varying types of trees that could be planted, taken down and alike. You have to also have an annual budget of two dollars per capita of village residents. So we have approximately eleven thousand people within the village, so that would be an annual budget of twenty-two thousand dollars, which is already within the DPW budget for tree maintenance, which also includes taking down trees. You know, the Arbor Day Foundation is very clear about that. And then also, you have to celebrate Arbor Day, and Arbor Day always falls on the last Friday of April, okay? And though this past year, we didn't have an Arbor Day celebration, the Boy Scouts...
We did!
We did!
Oh, we did?
Yes, we did!
We did, there was, there was, uh...
That's great.
We were there. Deputy Mayor Corrigan was there, former trustee Bruce Simon, yeah, they, uh...
Oh, that's fantastic.
The new owners of OTB, Ace Rainbow, planted a whole, you know, corner there, it looks really good.
Oh, that's great, because that's part of the application process, is to describe our celebration that took place, so. So anyway, all that will be submitted once the actual public hearing is held and the ordinance is passed. And then one final thing is the community development block grant, the eighty-five thousand dollars that we were awarded, there's a training session tomorrow that Tom Zordan, the treasurer, and I will be attending, which will, it's mandatory training on, we have to go to, on how to actually capture the funds, which we've been awarded, and how they'd be vouchered so we can be reimbursed. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred, good job, and I know this has been a lot of work, I want to recognize the head of our recycling committee, Bruce Simon, who's been involved with this through the years, this is a large, a large ongoing process, and it gets us the ability to receive and apply for numerous grants, so again, thank you for all the hard work. I think we started looking at this, what, Bruce, is it three years? Four years ago? Four years ago, those little trees we planted are now grown up. So it's great that we're doing this, and thank you for all your hard work. Okay, audience participation, please come up to the microphone and state your name and whatever comments or concerns you may have.
Good evening, Roy Chudy, sixteen Lonigan Drive, thank you for the opportunity to come up and address the board and my neighbors.
Roy, can you speak a little louder?
Oh, sure, sure.
It's not working.
Sorry. As discussed previously, and more specifically at the Mawa River cleanup, I would like to know, has the village contacted the homeowners on Hillside Avenue regarding the dumping of debris and the cleanup of that area?
Wait, would that be, it's Hillside, but also it's Interstate, right?
Yeah, I believe.
I think most of it was on Interstate.
Interstate.
I thought Interstate is the one, the one, when you run along the basketball court, right?
Yes, sir.
That would be Interstate, right?
I know Randy and Mike have been?
Yeah, they've been on, Joe can talk about that.
Randy and Mike have been?
Joe, what?
The microphone. Oh, I'm sorry, I can hear myself clearly. Randy and Mike, I know, have been on top of that.
And by on top of that, that?
They're issuing summonses and having conversations with the homeowners.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, since I'm on the lower end of that, and many of my neighbors, I certainly don't like to take anybody's money in these times, you know, so if, even if they just get notified to clean it up and then fail to do so, well, then a fine, I could see, should be implemented.
That's usually how they would work it.
Okay, so, so...
They have been in contact with all the homeowners.
Because as of yet, I still, you know, there's still a lot of debris there, and, you know, as we've had so much rain recently, and as of today, for the month of June, we've had more than the average monthly downpours, so, and the angle of which all that debris is on, it's just sliding further and further into the river, which will compromise the area and help to dam up and put us back into a very, you know, poor situation. So I hope that's adjudicated as quickly as can. We were speaking of recreation areas and playgrounds, so I would like to know if the playground for the Squire's Gate area is going to be implemented soon?
Joe, you want to touch on that?
Actually, Terry.
Yeah, I can, you know, we've had a great deal of difficulty with the attorney for the estate, and Joe has been in touch with him also, I've had a number of phone calls, and he's very difficult to get, a lot of emails. We have the title policy, or title search, rather, we're ready to close, the only thing that the title company needs is information from the seller's attorney with respect to the estate, because the property at this juncture is owned by an estate. Joe and the mayor got copies of my angry emails to the seller's attorney last week, because I frankly am on the verge of asking the board for authorization to bring in declaratory judgment action, which is a type of action that you would bring in order to force somebody with whom you have a contract to, I'm sorry, specific performance is what I meant to say, to perform their contract. And Joe got an email back that, in fact, his father had died that day, so, you know, we're hoping to get, get some type of communication from the seller's attorney this week and provide the last piece of information that's needed to the title insurance company so that we can close. Once the title insurance company has that information and can say to us that you're going to get good title, then we're good to go. So that's, that's the last piece we're waiting for. All right, that's understandable with the passing of, sure. Is there a way, is it possible to put that on a village website, when it does, if, you know, if it happens between now and the next? Once it closes? I'm sure that's not a problem. Yeah, so we can have an update? Sure.
Yeah.
On that, I appreciate that very much. And lastly, I want to also thank Mr. Curly with regard to his views on the quarry site, because, again, as we all know, that would be a huge aid to, not only us, our neighbors in New Jersey also for flood remediation. We were scheduled to have a meeting with them, the concerned citizens of Suffolk, our small group, was to have a meeting tomorrow, but due to other obligations, they canceled on us, so we are looking forward to have that meeting, you know, set for another date. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roy. Phyllis.
Yes, ma'am.
Phyllis Kazdin.
Hi, I have a question.
Who are you?
Pardon me?
What's your name?
What's my name? You just said, I know you do.
I know.
It's Phyllis Kazdin, I do know my name.
What's her address?
Um, on the radio, Christopher St. Lawrence Supervisor was discussing the fact that he didn't know what to talk about, so his subject matter was the quarry, and he came across that everything has been decided on, and stated that it has been approved, and that the town of Ramapo was going to pay for all of the works, and that it was approved by the, whatever board had to approve it, and that the town of Ramapo would be paying for the engineer to run this program of which they would control the waters, and somehow they were going to pump water into it when there was too much water in Squire's Gate, and then pump water out.
Yes.
Is this where we are right now in this program?
Okay, the situation is, I think, in terms of the quarry proposal, it's been talked about, you know, for a number of years, that that could be used to benefit the flooding, and I think more recently, based on the type of floods we've had, I think people feel more confident that's the case, I don't want to speak the residents, because the nature of the floods have been more like flash floods, like a dam collapses, and, you know, it's not, it's, it's, so that kind of situation where, in a temporary basis, you could have water in and then let it out after, would be something that I think could make a difference. The situation there is, is that building this flood mitigation system, one designing it, building and maintaining it, is very expensive. So the town of Ramapo has proposed that a developer, as part of their proposal, to build a number of units, which I think the number's around two sixty, would be that part of this, if it was approved by the village, that that would be something that they would provide as part of the approval. So, you know, that's kind of, you know, where it is, there's been no official application, right, to the?
There's an application pending.
Oh, he talks, he makes it sound like they're ready to dig tomorrow.
No, no, there's no approval, or there's, there's a long way to go, there's an application that's before the planning board on Quarry Ridge, but it hasn't really moved forward, there's the, really, you know, the village board ultimately decides the zoning, and then the planning board and the village board would vote on approvals, but I think, aside from the flood mitigation, or whether or not, you know, the number of units involved, I think the biggest issue right now is access to the property, and I think that that's what's kind of, the developer is, is working on.
Right, but if, if the town is going to pay for it, would, you know, or build it, would they have to come to the village to get your approval that this can happen?
They're not, that would just be that the developer would pay for the flood mitigation system.
Oh, that's not what he said.
That's, that's not, and the town, well, they're looking for grant money, and the town would maintain it.
Town.
Town of Ramapo would maintain the?
So whether you live in the village, you live in the town, it's still going to cost the taxpayer?
I don't, I mean, yeah, I don't know, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
It's not money out of his pocket, it's money out of all of our pockets, our own real estate.
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at the situation in terms of, you know, I don't think we're at that point yet, because the development has to move forward, I know there are other people in the community who are looking to get the flood mitigation portion... Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at the situation in terms of, you know, I don't think we're at that point yet because the development has to move forward. I know there are other people in the community who are looking to get the flood mitigation portion of the quarry without the development. But again, it's something that, you know, is in, is moving forward. I mean, it's not, sorry, it's not, it's before the planning board, but I don't, it's not moving forward that quickly.
Right, well, I also understood that they have never established any egress or ingress to the property.
That's the big issue.
And they want to build a bridge, they want this and that, so, and they don't have the option of having them come out behind the restaurant. They can't do that.
That's the issue. The main issue that I understand from the project is access. So the issue that we've dealt with and, you know, Mr. Chudy mentioned, a group there that believes that the quarry could provide some significant flood relief, is that the only proposal now would be that if that development is approved, they're getting a number of units and obviously that'll be profitable for them. And as a condition to that approval, they'll build this flood mitigation system. But right now, they're not moving forward in any real speed or progress with the development because they're unable to gain egress into the property.
Right.
So that's kind of where it is.
So they're not going to go ahead necessarily with that, the town improving that property?
There is no indication that the flood mitigation portion of the project would move forward at this stage. I don't think there's any indication, I think that, you know-
Maybe 50, 20 years from now.
Well, I mean, who knows? I mean, depends on what, when the project, if it moves forward, if they move forward their application.
You know, probably dredging the Ramapo River would help.
No.
Pardon me?
According to the engineers, our engineers tell us that that would not help.
It would not?
It would not.
Oh, because you can see from the river levels over the years, that you can see the river more, it's more visible than it has been in the past.
But what I'm telling you is, I'm not an engineer, but I listen to them.
Right.
That's what they tell us.
Okay, so it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow?
He stayed at a Holiday Inn Express though this morning.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
You're welcome.
I just want to answer a few questions that Phyllis raised since we've been meeting with the mayor, the town supervisor, engineers, state officials. Mr. St. Lawrence has kept to paying the operational costs only of the quarry. He is not going to build it. The Goldstein brother, the Goldstein family will build it, as Dagan said, if they get permission to build. Our group, the Concerned Citizens of Suffolk, are going out and trying to raise this money through grants, state funds, federal funds. It's not going to be 20 years. It's not going to be 20 years. We will get something done in the near future because we'll just keep pounding on doors until people listen and hear. We've met with the assembly people, the state senators, the congresspeople, Dagan attended one of our meetings, Mr. St. Lawrence attended one of our meetings, Senator Carlucci was there. Five county legislatures had promised to put up some money for this project if the Goldsteins do not get their approval. So there will be money becoming available. It's something that should have been done 40 years ago, but we can't worry about what should have been done. We're going to worry about what we can get done now. So I hope that answers a couple of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Okay, move right along. Oh, sure.
Jean Henley, 135 Wayne Avenue. I arrived late so I missed the portion of the public hearing regarding the money in lieu of recreation. The dollar values that you had listed on the website, are those increased values or decreased numbers as far as units, the unit values of, do you know what I'm talking about? For each unit, there was a dollar value listed on the website. Have the, what were the previous values per unit? Per unit?
We discussed this and we tabled it. It was $5,000 a unit based in '04. We didn't pass it, we tabled it.
I know, but did it, are you looking to raise it or lower it?
It's decreasing it to come into line with what is typical in other municipalities. Because in the past, every, we've had that in place, I think since '04 when Mr. Giantino was mayor, before that I think it was $500 a unit. But it's such a large number that in any significant development, including Gitlow and Cross Street, since that methodology's been in place, we've negotiated individually with the developer. And our planner, our lawyer, myself, we felt that we don't want to be in a situation where we're individually negotiating because someone could say, well, you discounted it 80 percent, so we want a methodology in place that applies to everybody. And then the only source of negotiation would be how much credit they get, up to $50,000 based on recreation they provide themselves. We tabled it, I think the concern was over the break points, sorry, that's, you know, for my business advisory fees, over a certain level. So I think that was a concern that Trustee Abado had brought up and we tabled it and I believe that we will address that in the next month and bring it back at the July meeting.
Now, as far as if and when something is passed, anything that has, at what point would a developer, if a developer's in the process of building something now, would they be grandfathered into the old?
Yes, it would be, when they get, it applies when they pull their building, they'll get a C.L. That's a C.L.
So that's at the end, so that's the, at the end of the project?
Um, no, building permit. So it would be any, anyone when they pull a building permit. So that would be anyone before.
What's the definition?
Projects that may have been approved but have not yet pulled building permits.
So has Washington Avenue or Wayne Avenue?
No.
Okay.
And neither has-
So Hillside's exempt?
Sorry, neither has Gitlow 3, but the village negotiated a different agreement with them to waive the recreation fees, in turn that they're going to pay a yearly fee of $25,000 to the village in perpetuity. So again, we want to avoid those situations in which we're individually negotiating and having it.
Now, is there any possibility that these developments can do something in the next month to secure, you know, the exemption or the, you know, grandfathered into the old, to be exempt from the new?
I think that, regardless, I think that, I believe, and I don't have, I've had, haven't had conversations, that I'm sure that anybody who is in the process of doing it would come to the village about it because as they know, we need to talk about, someone said we need to talk about recreation fees, we've always negotiated with the developers because the fee schedule is just way off the charts. So this would apply to anyone who hasn't pulled a building permit yet.
Okay. And also, I'd like to draw your attention to a dead tree that's on the corner of Memorial and 202, and I'm very concerned about it. I would like the Public Works to take a look at it.
If you want to mention that Charles is right there.
Because God forbid, you know, it's definitely leaning on the 202 side, so if it does fall, that's where it's going and, you know, it will take a bit of time to remove it.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Moving right along. Terry has something on.
Yeah, I had one additional thing, it's very important, but it wasn't on the agenda and I forgot to bring it up before. As the board's aware, through the FEMA program that Joe's been working so hard on, the village will be purchasing four of the properties in Squire's Gate with the money that we expend, of course, to be reimbursed by the government. So at this juncture, I have contracts from the seller's attorneys in each cases that are going to need some work to fit the unusual circumstances we have here. But nonetheless, at this juncture, I would ask that the board authorize the mayor to execute the contracts. There's four separate contracts, each for $255,000 minus the amount of money that each of the homeowners has been paid from the various insurance concerns. So that would be authorizing him to sign contracts with Gurgis for 96 Lonigan Drive, Cohen for 94 Lonigan Drive, Hallett at 99 Lonigan Drive, and Smith at 97 Lonigan Drive.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. On favor? Oh, roll call, sorry. Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Osborne, in the blues.
Couple of brief updates and just one item to vote on tonight. One of the things we've been working on, it's actually going very well, is we've been clearing up warrants. Our detective bureau's been tracking down warrants, some of them new, some of them old. We had a very good grab last week. A gentleman was harassing a woman here in the village for a long time, disappeared for a while, we ended up tracking him down with the US Marshals in New York City and we apprehended him. And he actually took a plea today to prison time, which was great, so cleared that up very quickly, but the detectives are working very strongly on our warrants. May 21st, we had our Colonel Grossman presentation at the Lafayette Theater, he's an international school safety expert. We had almost 600 of us in the theater, officers and school officials, and a great presentation for eight hours. And the good thing about it was, I was very fortunate to host it here, was that we had all the officers from all over the region eating in our restaurants downtown, it's 600 of them. So restaurants and excellent, it was a great day for all. Firearms and Taser training is complete for the year and-
Oh, do we have that?
Very quickly, one of the things we're working on, another thing this time of year is our quality of life issues, which is basically going after disorderly behavior, drinking and public things of its nature. It's going very well, we haven't had many incidents, but we are being very proactive with it, particularly in the evening times, and it's going very well. The only item I ask you to vote on is Resolution Number 10 of 2013. Just explain it real quickly, it's joint special weapons and tactics team. We have been a member of the Rockland County React, which is regional entry and counterterrorism team since 2004. That is basically a county SWAT team. Clarkstown and Spin Valley each operate their own SWAT teams. And the other eight departments in the county, including us, all participate in one unit and it's a mutual aid agreement. And we've used them many times here in the village, county SWAT, and we've assisted many times outside, like last night in that homicide Ramapo, we had our K-9 and two officers over there assigned to the SWAT team. So all this is tonight is just a resolution to continue that practice of being on that county SWAT team, which is a win-win because if we ever need a SWAT team, we could have 40 officers here in 15, 20 minutes, hopefully quicker than that, but if it's certain times of the day, it could be a little longer. And really, all expenses are paid incurred by their own department. So it's a huge advantage for us to have this unit. And we're just asking you to vote to continue that unit on the SWAT team.
Excellent.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It has to be Resolution Number 11.
That's fine.
Now you tell me?
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number?
11.
11.
So moved.
Ah, not Number 10, huh?
She's new. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you Mayor Moore, thank you very much.
Thanks Chief. Okay, Department of Public Works.
Good evening Mayor and the board. Requesting authorization to accept a proposal from O'Brien and Gear for Tasks 4, 5, and 6 of Phase 1 of the required sanitary sewer inflow and infiltration project in the amount of $48,000. The cost of this work will be charged to the capital account. Task 1 through 3 will be performed by the DPW and will save $56,000 in capital funds.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Requesting authorization to award a contract for the milling and resurfacing portion of the roadway improvement Phase 6 project of the, to the low bidder, Bella Vista Construction Suffolk, New York. The contract amount is $267,855 and is based on estimated quantities. This project includes the replacement of concrete curbs, Belgian block curbs, ADA ramps, and partial replacement of concrete sidewalks and concrete aprons on Maplewood Boulevard.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried. We also, Mr. Rice and Trustee Abado suggested doing a roll call on the first one for the, so can we get a new motion, the second for the O'Brien Gear Task 4, Task 5, and Task 6? $48,000?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yeah, Virginia tried to tell you.
Sorry about that. Yes, I vote yes.
I got a stick up for Virginia once.
The new girl was trying to tell you what to do.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. Requesting authorization to award a contract for the milling and resurfacing, I'm sorry. I have a, I have a little typo here on this. The Phase 7, which I'm requesting authorization for, is actually for the milling and resurfacing. I have a little typo on that first one. Phase 6 was only for the curbs, the concrete work. So I apologize for the confusion.
It's all right.
So Phase, Phase 6, concrete work for curbs. Phase 7 is the milling and resurfacing. And the low bidder is Tilcon New York, Inc., West Nyack, New York. The contract amount is $216,126 and is based on estimated quantities. Roads include Maplewood Boulevard, Lower Vian Road, and the latter company driveway at Antrim Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Requesting authorization to set a public hearing for the annual MS4 report.
So moved.
Second.
7:20?
Yes.
No.
No, 7:25.
7:25.
Can I have one additional item?
Sorry, is there a second?
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Yeah, I have one additional item. Requesting authorization to attend the green infrastructure in the urban landscape course. This course is offered by the New York State Parks Department in Statsburg, that's in Dutchess County. On June 21st, total cost of the course is $18.
Can you get that fee reduced? Is that in your budget? Yeah, is that in your budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, sorry. All in favor? Oh, no, wait, we need to, $18? Roll call. I'm not doing a roll call for $18. Before I put my foot down.
18 cents, yeah.
Are you serious?
You're going outside the county.
$18, okay. $18 worth of tape. Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote no, just because-
Okay, thank you.
Wait, Charles, can you just give, sorry, can you just give a quick update on the bids that we have out?
Oh, yeah. Tomorrow, we have a job walk for the demolition on Lonigan Drive and the bids are due June 25th. We just received approval for the variance from the DC today, so that's being issued an addendum to the plan holders tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Village Clerk.
I only have one item, Mayor. The agreement between Mr. Reller, our grant writer, and the village of Suffolk, his contract comes up July the 1st.
Okay, then.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mrs. Abado?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good job Fred.
Thank you Fred.
Keep up the good work.
That's it?
Okay, moving right along. Finance Department, Tom.
Do you want to just stay up there and holler?
No, you can just skate down.
It's downhill.
Look at that, oh.
Use those brakes.
Be careful to get a ticket for speeding.
Good evening Mayor and Board.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Just have four items. The first item is a proposal from Cornerstone, which is our telephone service provider, and this proposal entails changing over 21 of our phone lines from copper lines to voice-over IP lines. We have 31 lines within this building here. 10 of them would remain as regular copper line, landline phones, of five of which are in the police department. The police chief's line would remain the way it is, the lieutenant's line, two fax lines, and I forget what the other fifth one is off the top of my head, but those five would remain the way they are. Obviously, that's in case, you know, computer systems go down, whatever, at least the chief and lieutenant won't be able to use their lines. This doesn't affect the 911 lines, that's a separate unto itself. If we do this right now, if we, if we accept this, we'll save roughly $268 a month, and I envision using that monies to fund a new telephone system. Telephone system, although it works, it's getting very old. We can't get replacement parts. The last time we needed a new telephone, we had to go on eBay and track one down, and luckily, we found one. But the companies, you know, they, they don't make them anymore, we can't get parts, so we have to upgrade a little bit. So, that's what I envision to do with the savings from this. So, I'm just asking if you guys want to do that and approve it, I'll get it started.
Okay. Um, is there a vote on that, or how do we go? I guess a motion, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. No, is there the dollar? We have the proposals here. Hold on. How much is it? We saw it here.
Well, it, it cost us nothing to do this.
Right.
The, the phone company's going to pay for everything.
How do we vote on that?
And...
It doesn't cost anything, man.
What, what happens is, we generate the savings, because for every line that comes into the building, there's a charge of like $9 a month just to have the line.
Let's just, yeah, then...
So, now, we're going to take 21 lines and put it into one T1 line.
Because it's not FCC.
Right. So, we're saving all those line fees, and plus, we're going into, you know, the computer area.
Okay, we're fine, then. I don't think we need to vote, according to Terry.
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, it's a policy, it's just that we don't have to roll call, right?
Right. So, yeah, let's just, just to be safe. Good idea.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as residents know, we sent out the water and sewer billings on May 1st, and they totaled $1,447,000, and this was actually in line with what we estimated, you know, with our budget for this cycle. Tax bills went out on May 30th, May 31st. The ladies worked hard to get that all done, and of course, people came in on June 1st. Thank you for paying your bills, we like that. And lastly, I have the annual insurance renewal. Unfortunately, you know, we just got it today. We hand it out to everyone, I think Virginia gave you copies of the insurance renewal for both the general liability insurance and the workers' comp insurance. Unfortunately, over the last year, we have...
Can you speak a little louder, Tom?
Unfortunately, we had a few claims in the last year, and it pushed our insurance rates up a little bit, but our broker went out to about six different companies to try and get us the best pricing. Some people didn't even want to touch us, unfortunately, and, but the other ones all were higher than what these guys came in with. Still the same company, that we're very pleased with our business relationship and how they handle our claims. The working relationship, as the village clerk can tell you, is very good. Additionally, our workers' comp insurance came in, and as you can see, it says it's $371,000, but I made a couple of phone calls, and now it's down to $360,000. And then I said, if I pay upfront, can I get a little discount? So, they gave me another 2% off, so it's going to be about $354,000.
So, realistically, as Tom was saying, the workman's comp is right in line with what it was, which is much less than where we had been with other programs before. The concern is, we have a significant single-item loss run on our liability policy associated with a part of it, and I guess the companies typically have a five-year, right, look-back?
Yeah.
So, this is still in its fifth year, so hopefully, next year, that loss comes off, and, you know, it affects it, but when we looked at the loss runs over the last four years, it's been very minimal. But when you have a claim, or, or the fifth year ago, that really, you know, they look back on it, so that's kind of affecting it, but it doesn't seem that there are many players in this line of business, anyway.
No, no, there's not, there's not. Every, every year, you know, it's just the same people over and over, and, and over the last few years, there's been less. People have gotten out.
Yeah, so you kind of, you know, don't have much choice. Okay, so, is there a motion? Right, you have it?
So moved.
260...
Second.
Well, we have to have the prices, right? 269.67, and what do you want to say on the perma, 350?
The other one is, it's three, 360, it's 360,700, but if I pay by July 1st in full, we get 2% off, it's 6,200.
Well, let's, yeah, we can vote as 360, so, we'll make sure you send the check in on time.
Oh, yes.
So, is there, do we have to do this separately, or we can do them?
I can roll this one.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is taken.
Okay. Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, trustees, Mr. Meehan has two resolutions.
Yeah, on the, the first resolution on Yorkshire WL, WL Center Line is actually sort of co-sponsored by Charles Fall Siglia, and he's not here this evening, so I'm going to withdraw that motion, and will, I'll withdraw that motion because my colleague, Charles Fall Siglia, who's sort of co-sponsoring it, is not present, and I'm going to wait till next month.
His bus broke down, by the way, that's what happened. The guy's... Oh, really? Yeah, he called me, and he was on his way, and his bus got into an accident. He doesn't drive the bus, he was on the bus.
I hope he's okay, I'll have to check. Okay, on the second resolution involving gun control, it's rather short, and I'll read it. And it says, "Whereas gun violence in the United States is continued at crisis levels, and whereas federal legislation is required to deal with this calamity, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees urges Congress to adopt legislation that would include a thorough," has through, but a thorough background, include thorough background checks before acquiring a firearm and confirmation of the character of the applicant, including firearms purchased at gun shows, and the ban of the importation of assault weapons capable of firing 30 or more bullets, and be it further resolved that Congress should consider legislation similar to that adopted by the state of New York, and be it further resolved that in conjunction with the foregoing, there must be increased funding for mental